Okay, we will call the September 19th, 2023 meeting to order at 4:00 PM. Just a couple of opening announcements. Many of you know, we always start our meeting with an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. This week, we don't have anyone lined up for an invocation, so we're going to start with just with a moment of silence. And there's plenty that you can pray about to yourself. If you are a member of a faith group who would like to participate in our invocation, all faith groups are welcome. Just send an email to Carissa Green. Her email address is kgreen@volusia.org. This is Carissa down here to my left, your right, and she will send you all of the particulars. We really like to start off with somebody from the community doing this. So if you would stand for a moment of silence, and then we'll go right into the Pledge of Allegiance. Carissa, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dempsey.
Here.
Mr. Johansson.
Here.
Mr. Kent.
Here.
Mr. Reinhardt.
Here.
Mr. Robbins.
Here.
Mr. Santiago.
Here.
Mr. Brower.
Here.
Okay, and then we always start our meeting with you, the public first, and we have several people that would like to speak. You will have three minutes. If you, when I call your name, just come down to the central podium. Please make sure that microphone is near your mouth, so that everybody can hear you, and it can be recorded. If you need any help, staff will help you. The podium also goes up and down to adjust for whatever your height is. First, we have Joni Hunt. Wow, welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Joni Hunt, Vice President of Government Affairs at Halifax Health. I come before you today with two things. First of all, great news, and second of all, many thanks. The great news is that Halifax's pediatric clinic on Keach Street is open once again and seeing patients, and that's wonderful for those patients and families in our community. You may know that that building flooded during Hurricane Ian, and in fact, it was incredibly damaged, but thanks to our great landlords, that's you all, we're back and working again. Halifax Health and Volusia County collaborates on, in a number of different ways, but I think this is one of my very favorite. That Keach Street Pediatric Clinic is so important. I want to thank a couple of people. I want to especially thank Janine Jennings and her team. They were with us every step of the way, and it was a journey of a thousand steps. And of course, as always, under the great direction of your county manager, George Reckonwald. I'm joined today by one of my favorite colleagues. This is Nate Gitner. He's the man who really did all the work, and he has some additional details.
Good afternoon. Again, my name is Nate Gitner. I'm the Director of Operations at Halifax Health, and I oversee the ambulatory clinics with Halifax Health, our primary care pediatric and specialty clinics. And I stand before you today specifically on behalf of the Keach Pediatric Neighborhood Care Clinic, with immense gratitude, to express our thanks to the council for unwavering support and generous funding that allowed us to renovate and rebuild our clinic after the flooding caused by Hurricane Ian. In the wake of Hurricane Ian, the community and this clinic specifically faced a crisis. It left our facility submerged under several feet of water, rendering it unsafe and unusable for work in pediatric care. In those times, we were forced to temporarily relocate those shared offices with another Halifax Health pediatric provider outside of that neighborhood until September 5th of 2023. Dr. Andrew Halpern, dedicated physician at Keach Pediatrics since 2016, continued to provide care to 1,652 pediatric lives assigned to him during this period. Today, we're here to express our gratitude for your support in restoring our clinic and sharing our mutual accomplishment. Thanks to the support and funding provided by the county, we have returned to a fully renovated clinic. It's a symbol of resilience and community spirit, and a testament of what can be achieved when we come together in times of need. Additionally, we returned to the clinic with more to offer to the community. We introduced a nurse practitioner, Holly Murch, who will provide services with Dr. Andrew Halpern to meet the growing need of this clinic and this community. In conclusion, we want to express our profound gratitude to the county and the council standing behind us during this time to help rebuild Halifax Health Keach Pediatric Clinic. With your support, we're not just restoring a building, but restoring focus on the health of the lives of childrens and families we serve in this area. Thank you for your commitment and well-being of our community to make it possible for us to continue our mission of providing exceptional pediatric care. Thank you.
Thank you. David Santiago, did you have a comment?
If you may, I know it's not traditional, Mr. Chair, because it felt like it was a little bit of presentation. If I may, just ask him a question.
Are you open for questions?
Absolutely.
Yes.
It felt more presentation-like, that's why I wanted to do that. Where is this clinic?
It's in a Keach Pediatric Neighborhood, which is less than a mile from Halifax Health's main campus in Daytona, right off of Keach Street.
Right, it's almost adjacent to Campbell Middle School.
Okay, awesome. And then the final question, which you can answer at another presentation one day, can you later on tell me when you're going to expand services on the West Volusia side for the pediatrics?
Yes, we can.
And Oak Hill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that was two. You were Nate Gitner. Okay, Lindsay Pate.
Good afternoon, Lindsay Pate, proud Ormond Beach citizen. Combative, aggressive, ready to fight, or eager to fight, and pugnacious. Troy Kent used this description of a citizen when they inquired for more substantial answers as to why we are in this position and how we are going to get...
Hold on one second, Lindsay. Hold her time, please.
Thank you. Chairman, under our, under our rules, all comments need to go to the entire council. Ms. Pate doesn't know the rules of this elected body, obviously. I'd like to help her in this council. Number four says, "All comments shall be directed to the council as a whole. Comments should not be addressed to a single member of the council or to county staff members."
Okay. You direct your...
Someone described a citizen when they inquired for more substantial answers as to why we are in this position and how we will get out of it regarding the fuel farm. Further, that person called concerned citizens conspiracy theorists, made accusations of spreading false information, and accusing me of being on the other side, implying possibly Belvedere's side. Why would myself or anybody else be on Belvedere's side? Are we not a democracy? Are we not allowed to ask questions or request public information and share our genuine and valid concerns for our beautiful town? I believe John Adams said it best, "Liberty cannot be preserved without a general knowledge among the people who have a right and a desire to know." Mr. Reckonwald, we uncovered documents that show the county met with Belvedere on June 9th, 2022, just a few weeks before they met with the city. I'd like you to listen in on what Belvedere had to say about the county meeting.
Because I can tell you, we are blow and go, so there's, we are not, we had such a good meeting with the county based on our zoning and land use.
We are blow and go. We had such a good meeting with the county based on our zoning and land use. Why wasn't the severity of the meeting brought forth in detail at the August 23rd, 2023 special county meeting? From my recollection, it was made as if, as if someone walked in and asked a question or two at the permit office. The county should start recording the pre-permit meetings just like the city does to have more transparency. On September 18th, 2023, the News Journal published an article, Mr. Reckonwald, you are quoted in it, making it seem like it'd be difficult to find another piece of land that would work for Belvedere. They claim that they have not heard from the county about any prospective land, the specifications, which are not unique, just access to a railway, industrial zoning, and proximity to highway. How does 847 work for that but nowhere else? Nowhere else. We're looking for accountability, transparency, and truth. A solution for the future cannot be found without identifying all parts of the problem and the breakdown in communication. Everything that led us to where we are today, which is a hot mess. Concerned citizens and elected officials who actually care to stop Belvedere's fuel farm, I ask you to be combative. Be ready to fight for the public's well-being. Be eager to fight for the homes, businesses, and qualitative life of Ormond Beach. Be pugnacious enough that Belvedere and Grupo Mexico know without a doubt that we are not accepting this project. And to the public, go to protectormanbeach.com to find all of the audio documents and information on this issue that we found.
Paul Richardson.
My name is Paul Richardson of Millan. New Mexico Governor Michelle Gristle issued an emergency health decree suspending the right to carry firearms in public across the city of Albuquerque and the surrounding county. She has outlawed both open and concealed carry in an executive decree that surreverts the powers of the U.S. Constitution and New Mexico legislature. This is an outrage. This unilateral degree strikes down civil constitutional rights and absolutely targets law-abiding citizens and a vulgar display of power to turn them into criminals. I call on New Mexico legislature to swiftly remove Governor Michelle Gristle as soon as possible. She has shown her utter contempt for the rule of law, and she is attempting to establish her own law beyond the limits set upon her. If she is now impeached or sentenced in some way, Governor Gristle will only try this again in the future. There is no such thing as a public health emergency exception to the U.S. Constitution. This is also a dangerous test run using public health as a way to steal Americans of their civil constitutional rights to self-defense. The radical party here in the United States have been insisting on calling every suiting a public health crisis. They want to use this terminology to then rob us of our Second Amendment right of self-defense. It is insidious and a threat to our way of life as Americans. I bring this here today because it might come here to Florida one day. Governor DeSantis has already condemned New Mexico Governor Gristle's actions. This council wants to announce using a public health crisis to curb people's civil rights. I call on you to, to also publicly condemn New Mexico Governor Michelle Gristle's actions and call on the Florida Legislature to outlaw future governors or any United States president from suspending civil constitutional rights in this manner in Florida. This must never happen in Florida. God bless Volusia County and God bless America.
Keith Chester.
Good afternoon, Connie Colby, Ormond Beach, Florida. I'm piggybacking on something I started to talk about last time. I keep hearing that a bulk fuel storage farm is permitted by code in Volusia County. I have read through several times, and I don't find that terminology anyplace in the code. Code 72172 of zoning says, "If a use or a structure is not expressly permitted in any classification, the enforcement official shall not permit the use or structure unless it's substantially similar to the use or structure otherwise permitted in the classification." It would be a stretch to say that anything else in the code is substantially similar to a bulk storage fuel farm, unlike Ormond Beach, which, to our fury, memorialized those words in their new I to a heavy industrial zone as a conditional use. It's concerning that the county is ignoring the fact that 874 Hall Road and surrounding properties are zoned I to A. The A at the end indicates that this is an airport protection overlay zone, which has additional restrictions. Why are these being ignored? The county verification summary verifies that this is, as well as the zoning maps and the properties in this area. Section 72296, in its definition of the airport protection overlay zone, states that it is created to protect the public health, safety, and welfare in the vicinity of an airport by minimizing the exposure to hazards. And that's not the whole thing, but that's part of it. The state requires that this zone be created in 2017. The Airport Protection Overlay Zone section ends with a list of prohibited uses in that zone. The last two prohibited are storage of explosive material and uses that assemble large groups of people, or any other use that could produce a major catastrophe as a result of an airplane crash. The property on which Belvedere hopes to build this monstrosity has an I to A designation. We should not even be talking to Belvedere, as far as I'm concerned. The company is less than four years old. It has, as all I can tell, four employees and can find no place that they have built anything like this yet. Why would we entrust our future to a company with no track record, especially for a potentially lethal project such as this? Am I done? Is that, no? Okay. We should not be their guinea pig. They have no proven record. Lastly, the property appraisers' website lists at least 30 properties owned by the Florida East Coast Railroad in Volusia County and four more up in Flagler. Not one of them could be as poor a choice as the one they selected in Ormond Beach. And additionally, I haven't heard much about how many trains are going to be coming through our area, but Ormond Beach has at least 10 railroad crossings.
Thank you. Karen Delisle.
I am Karen Delisle. I am an Ormond Beach resident. I live in Halifax Plantation, which is in the county. Thank you for the opportunity to address you once again. I oppose the Belvedere Fuel Farm on the basis of bad location and safety concerns near playgrounds, ballfields, neighborhoods, and the biggest private airport in Florida. I just lost half my screen. I apologize. Okay, let me talk from the heart, then. Obviously, 165 tanker fuel trucks on the road is not going to be a good thing every day for Volusia County. We know that the I-95 US-1 exit has been deemed as dangerous by truckers because it is too short and it is too sharp. However, I believe that learning about this fuel farm is as much a shock to y'all as it was to the citizens, and I suggest that we bury the vitriol as far as dealing with one another and work together as a team to promote better living in Volusia County. We have a beautiful county. We have a beachside, yet we have nature, and we need to preserve it, and especially the environment, whether it's the loop or whether it's the number of developments that are creeping in. If you go off Plantation Oaks Boulevard, off US-1, there are three new developments coming in there. And now at 1845 North US-1, there's a development that will have almost 1,000 homes, and they will be taking away 39 acres of wetland. You know, we have to stop. We know that flooding is a problem. Boy, do we know it after last year. We have to protect our environment, or we're just going to become another Jacksonville or another big city that's all pavement and no nature. And so I implore you, do not look at the citizens as an enemy, just as we will not look at you that way. If there's something we can do for you, let us know. We've got the manpower. We've got a lot, a lot of people interested in this. We've got children to protect. We've got the busiest private airport in Volusia County. 246 flights a day, and then I heard at the city commission meeting, the control tower isn't even manned a day and a half of the week. Half a day Saturday and all day Sunday. I'm not a pilot, but those would seem like busy days to me. And one of the aviation schools has international students, through no fault of their own, don't speak English. But if, as Dempsey says, that the most difficult time, the most dangerous time of a flight is the first mile, and you're over the depot, then we need communication. We need protection. We need safety. We need caring. We need you guys. Thank you.
Cynthia Ramirez.
You're welcome. Thank you. Cynthia Ramirez, Ormond Beach. I live in Ormond Green, which is off of Airport Road, so about two miles, as the crow flies, from the proposed fuel farm. As everyone else has already spoken, I am just here with the olive branch of, we need to work together. This is not, I'm a Volusia County native, and I cannot recall any project of this type of magnitude that could have such a devastating effect to our wonderful city and county. And I just implore you, please, work together as a team with your department heads, and let's come up with some solutions. I don't wish this on any other neighborhood or area in our, in our county, but if there is maybe a less populated, that doesn't have a 600-member-plus senior community, does not have ballfields where not only our local kids go and play, but those whole national tournaments, I mean, imagine the parents driving in on this little narrow road, and here's a fuel farm with, you know, thousands and thousands of gallons of very dangerous chemicals being stored, stored there in our environment. There are just so many impacts, potential impacts, that are coming with this project. Please, please, let's all work together to find a solution. Thank you.
Before I call the next person, can, can everybody on the council hear people? A little weak, but... What, what did you say, Mr. Brower? Okay, just please, again, make sure that the microphone is right at your, at your mouth, because we do care about the reason that you came, made this trip, and to talk to us.
Good afternoon, everyone. I know you've missed me the past couple of months. I have been doing some humanitarian work. I am Michelle Utter. I'm from Port Orange. I'm seven generations of Volusia County, have three sons serving in the U.S. Navy. I am letting people know that I am vaccine-injured by Pfizer, that we are taken down by social media like we don't care and our lives doesn't matter. Our own city, our own newspaper, news, none of us will let you know about our vaccine injuries, because they don't want you to know about all the injuries, deaths, that happened. And it's a shame, because I have CIDP, vascular issues, cardio issues, and more, besides tinnitus that keeps me up at night, and many other things. It's been documented, that's through the VICP, the CICP. I've been on Governor DeSantis' roundtable. I have talked into Latipo. But nobody, no institution here, because I worked in healthcare, nobody's going to tell you how dangerous these vaccines are. Not one of you. And when we ask for help, because actually, all of us that are suffering, because people here in Volusia County, I have to go two and a half hours because nobody will treat me here, or an hour and a half another way, because vaccine injuries don't exist. They do exist, and we are out there. Everyone should be made known that this happens. Would you like to sit at an infusion center for six hours and be infused with IVIG? Because what I have, there is no cure for, and they have no idea how long that I have to be on this. Future generations need to be thought about. I would love to have grandkids, great-grandkids, but I may not be able to be alive to see them, because they have no guarantees about me. The last time I did come, I did have somebody that decided to stare at me and intimidate me. I am not going to be intimidated. I have played Russian roulette with Pfizer. And I've worked at a hospital that had a live shooter. This vaccine is much worse. I have been scared about it many things, but all of you need to be, realize what goes on. And if you ask for help, because nobody, our government has abandoned us and left us our financial burdens, we need help, and there's going to be more of us out here that you're going to have to house and find medical treatment for, because our county, Halifax and Advent, don't help you, and I can tell you that for a fact. We deserve to have justice, and we need people to help us. Corey Mills doesn't help you. Rubio doesn't help you. We're passed around. Everyone wants to go back to DeSantis. So DeSantis and Latipo need to also realize, we are not props for their future presidency.
Thank you, Michelle.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Bartlow, and I live at Hope Street in Ormond Beach, and I've been at this location for approximately 10 years. I'm against the bulk fuel farm that is being proposed for Hall Road, and I'm not going to belabor everything that everybody else has gone into, but I do have a couple points to make. First of all, the traffic. There's only one way off of my street, and that's Harmony. They're proposing 165 trucks a day, plus the sports complex patrons, plus during Bike Week and Biketoberfest, the bikers use that as a cut-through to keep from going to all the traffic backed up at the Iron Horse. The second thing is the airport proximity, and as people have said, we have training schools there, and as recently as a little over a year ago, we had a plane go down in the field that is right next to where this proposed terminal was supposed to go. And if you're from the land area, you already know what can happen, because you had a plane that went down into your Publix on International, and that was just been in the last couple The third thing is leaks, and my entire neighborhood is on wells, and the concern is our well water that's there. In addition to leaking tanks, we also just had in the newspaper a report that there, that FEC had some kind of a leak up in Jacksonville this weekend that was some kind of a gas, and the people were evacuated at 2:00 in the morning, and then they were told that they could return at 4:00. So my question is, when I get a call to, to leave at 2:00 in the morning and come back at 4:00, where do I go? And who pays for that? So, in closing, I would just like to say that we need your help so that we don't turn Ormond Beach into the next East Palestine, Ohio. And I am from Ohio, and I know what those people are dealing with out there. So thank you for your time.
Good evening. Suzanne Shiber, Ormond Beach. On June 8th, 2023, at the Ormond Beach Planning Meeting, the amendment creation of the I-2 Heavy Industrial District Land Development Code change was passed. The applicant was listed as administrative. The document says the proposed amendment will not adversely affect public health, safety, welfare, or quality of life. Also, in the 23-page document, use of fuel storage facilities was brought up. The question is, why did administration bring forth this Heavy Industrial District without the fuel storage applicant? Why would the staff initiate LDC creation, knowing the meeting with Belvedere Terminals existed the year before? existed the year before? It is likely because of the Volusia County pre-application from summer of 2022. How could a project of this scope show environmental and land development reviews say "complete" in such a short amount of time, and without question, even if it was pre-application? What is also troubling is on page 16 of the same application file of 2022, the last modification date is August 7 of 2023 by staff. Yet at the public meeting on August 23rd, there was surprise by everyone. You do understand that public records reveal the chain of events, I would hope. The statement made by a councilman was to let the process play out. The process has been playing out, and the residents can see that the process is pandered to an out-of-state conglomerate who owns our railway and a piece of land, but doesn't live here. The residents that are impacted do live here. Last night, Councilman Kent held his quarterly town hall. He stated out loud repeatedly he reposes the feudal terminal in Ormond Beach. The Volusia delegation and Ormond Beach Commission oppose it. Yesterday, Chairman Bauer asked the mayors to unite to oppose it, and they did. So with all this loud opposition, why the shushing and referring to lawsuits in this chamber? I noticed when councilmen-at-large brought up calling Belvedere, no one shushed him and was worried about being sued. And no offense to the councilman-at-large, because at that point, I got it, since the staff were all saying they were surprised, why not just call and see? If one is afraid of being sued, then perhaps be silent, because shushing other councilmen to be silent is beyond your individual representation. A statement was made, beyond what we are already doing, what is it that you want done? And I will make a motion right now. Please make three motions tonight. Number one, put all the documents on the county website and stop the slow drip revealed by public information requests. Number two, reveal and change the, review and change the procedures for pre-application, so this never happens again. Number three, review zoning and land development codes for areas of our county. And lastly, please come to a consensus that information is released at each council meeting from today going forward. Thank you all for your time.
Rebecca from Hope Street.
Let's talk about spreading misinformation or the spreading of inaccurate information. Most of the information that has been collected thus far has been obtained through public records retrieval. Numerous documents and even recordings have been reviewed by countless members of the community. Everyone picks up on key pieces of information, information to focus their efforts on. At this point in the process, I would like to think that many here, and especially those sitting in front of me, have had their chance to review the same documents and even ventured to listening to recordings, as these are readily available. I would like to think that key officials have taken the time and your due diligence to get to the bottom of what has transpired over the past years in terms of fuel, the fuel terminal. Yesterday evening, some of us had the pleasure of interacting with one of you during an appreciated question and answer. It was reiterated to us that said person is the reason behind the special meeting that occurred a few weeks back, and also emphasized that he is the only one hosting these district dialogues. Once again, thank you. At this meeting, we were told that many of you, no specific names given, are also against the proposed fuel terminal. We were told that all the mayors of Volusia County are also against the fuel terminal. We were told that a higher-level official is also against the fuel terminal. We were told that there were members of your staff, including attorneys, having discussions with Belvedere Terminals regarding potential alternative sites. Once again, no specifics were given. When asked if I could get notes or audio from those discussions, I was told that they were not available. I asked for this information, because as it stands, a lot of pertinent information is getting lost in translation, thus leading to misinformation. I asked said person if he had the chance to listen to the audio recordings between Belvedere Fuel Terminals and the Ormond Beach SPRC, which occurred on June 22, 2022. To this, he answered no. Ironic that someone from an education background, usually geared at this concept of "we never stop learning," has not taken the time to absorb the vast amount of information provided in that encounter, to learn why many of us are taken back. Additionally, as a community, excuse me, additionally, a community member inquired as to whether companies are researched when they are presented to this. Said person said that, not in so many words, he could only answer for himself, and that he had family affairs to tend to, rather than spending time on reading, researching these companies. To be truthful, I appreciate his transparency in sharing that with us. However, I started to wonder, how many others sitting here before us have not done their research? Misinformation or inaccurate information is what led to this point. If you have the chance to listen to the audio from June 22nd, it clearly was not an ordinary project. Belvedere specifically stated, "This is not a public shop, shopping center." They stated it was a rail-fed fuel terminal where fuel is brought in by the FEC and tracks, and they're loaded into tankers. I have to skip forward. The audio provides valuable information, and I would like all of you to reach out and get that, mentions the trees, mentions all this other stuff, but it doesn't mention us, the people. Last night, one of our members asked for a city commission meeting in the Ocean Center, for the members of the city commission, the county commission, be at this meeting.
Thank you.
We asked that Belvedere show up at that meeting, too.
My name is Ron Morrison. I'm a longtime resident of Ormond Beach, a homeowner. This is the second county council meeting that I attended, where there was discussion regarding the proposed fuel terminal. I also recently attended a city of Ormond Beach council meeting, where the fuel terminal was also discussed, discussed. During these meetings, I've had the opportunity to hear numerous residents raise their opposition to the proposed terminal, heartfelt opposition. Their opposition involved health concerns, environmental concerns, and traffic concerns. Regarding traffic concerns, the main opposition to that was the 24/7 schedule of truck tankers, on an average of 165 of them per day being loaded, and then using local roadways to distribute the local fuel. I'd like to add one other concern regarding traffic. How does the fuel terminal receive its fuel? It receives its fuel via railcars using Florida East Coast Rail. There are some federal standards in place regarding how fuel is delivered via railway, and some other state of practice as well. Each tank car that is used is between 18 and 19 meters in length. Fuel distribution via rail occurs in clusters of 24 tank cars, and usually, a fuel load involves four clusters, and that is 96 tank cars. Okay? That train, then, requires a minimum of two locomotives, and each locomotive is 22.9 meters in length. So a typical fuel delivery by rail using Florida East Coast Rail, okay, would result in a train of 6,134.5 feet. This equates to 1.162 miles. Now, there is a spur in that location where the terminal is proposed. However, however, best possible scenario, okay, with a train that size, access to the west side of that track on Hall Road will be impeded, where there are a lot of homes there, and given an emergency, whether it's a health issue, a fire issue, or a law enforcement issue, emergency vehicles to provide assistance will be impeded to access those locations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Was I close?
Yes, you were pretty close. Celeste Mastobueno. I live in Bear Creek since 2006, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm speaking against the Belvedere Fuel Farm. We are scared, and we are really getting frightened about this. I know you already know about how many trucks in and out, and as he just said, where we live, we got Hall Road on one side and Airport Road on the other, and if that train is blocking us, we're sitting ducks if anything happens. We are really getting scared about this, and we just need something, something done, and some help. So, I know you've already heard anything, so that's it. Thank you.
Nancy Bates.
I'm Nancy Bates, Bear Creek, Ormond Beach. I'm one of the residents that will be killed if something happens to the fuel farm. One of the things that just struck us, me in particular, this week, was the idea that if, if there are going to be more traffic on the railroads bringing things in, the more, the more likely it is that we're going to have an accident. And if there is an accident, even if someone has a heart attack, we're not going to be able to get out if that train is sitting there. If there is a spill, we're all dead. We need your help. What you hear from the residents is a lack of confidence in you because of what we're hearing. That being said, we need you. We need you to help us. We need you to tell us what you have done at this point, so that we know where we're standing. I'm not seeing it anywhere. I'm getting dribs and drabs from bits and pieces of people, but I don't know if you've contacted Belvedere. I don't know if they've said, yes, they're willing to, to think of other alternatives. I don't know if you've given them information, because you said at the last meeting that you were going to explore other possible locations. Where are we on that? Part of the fact, part of the reason that we are feeling like we're feeling and you're getting yelled at, is because we don't know what you're doing. We need to know what you're doing, so that it helps us feel more confident, and like other people have said in the past, today, let's forget about how we got here. By God, we know we're here. We need help getting out of this mess, and I don't want to die because I can't breathe. I don't want my beautiful Ormond Beach to go by the wayside. We need your help. Please help us, and please tell us what you're doing. And if there's something we can do, clearly, we know how to research. If you need help with something, reach out, we'll certainly be there to help you. First of all, many, Ormond Beach, Bear Creek is retired. We don't have anything to do, anyway. So we research. A lot of the information that we're finding is because we don't have anything else to do. Use us to your advantage, and help us help you to do what's right for our community. Thank you.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. I was at the last meeting you all had. I was at the meeting last night. From what I understand, and I may be wrong, but at the last meeting, one of the commissioners, we're supposed to not be able to mention names, but obviously, you know who I'm talking about, kept saying, "Watch what you say," because of lawsuits. He wasn't opposed to the concept that all of you hate the fuel farm. He was not saying that. He was not saying he was for the fuel farm. He was saying, "Watch what you say for lawsuits." And last night, it came across as, well, not all of you are opposed to the, to the fuel farm. So that's part of the comments made by, and I'm not allowed to say who, had a meeting last night. He wanted people to watch what they say, because what you say comes out as truth. And there are people in the group that felt that you all were not backing those people that opposed to the fuel farm, which, from what I understood at the meeting two weeks ago, you guys really were not happy with the fuel farm. Secondly, there's a difference between the county and Ormond Beach. You all don't follow, from what I understand, Ormond Beach's meetings, their planning. You guys, maybe one person who used to work, be on the commission, does, but the rest of you, you don't go through their meetings, you don't go to their planning board meetings and, and look it up. So you all really had no knowledge of this until it came forward. The county really has no control over what happens to this once it's annexed into Ormond. So all of this that people are talking about, they're dumping on you that you have no control over, from what I understand. All right? Secondly, it was brought up last night that Ormond does not have to annex the property. Everybody assumes it's already done deal. It's not. The done deal is the paving company. They asked to be annexed? They were annexed. It's done. It's finished, complete. Now, the fuel farm is now next in line to be annexed. That may not happen. All right? If you look at the comments from the first person, they were worried about somebody not backing them, they were worried about what he was saying to the public. He was very explicit all through the night of what he said, what the documents were, what was, the documents that he had seen, and what other people see. So I'm asking you guys to make it perfectly clear what the Land Development Code says in the county, and what may or may not happen in the city is none of your business. All right? Thank you.
Craig Smith. I don't think they're ready for you, Keith. I don't think any of us. Sorry, they're, we're going to have to, when we get done here, we actually have to reboot the system. We're having some technical difficulties. So, Craig Smith.
Good evening. Craig Smith, resident of Ormond Beach, and I'm here in opposition of the, the fuel storage farm. I'm very concerned about what is happening in our country. We have foreign adversaries that are buying up land and building battery plants in opposition of the residents in, in Michigan. We have technology billionaires that are buying up land around strategic air bases, and also driving, you know, buying out small farms and driving out our, our farmers. I have sat in the meetings both here and also at Ormond Beach, and I, I stay till the conclusion of the meeting, and I know at the end of the meetings, the commissioners are responding to the residents. And what I find is that, yes, there are some motions that are being made, which is a positive, but when we bring up the issues about the airport, and I met with the, or spoke with the city planner for Ormond Beach after the meeting, last meeting, and asked him about what was, discussions that were going on with the, the airport. Well, the response was, well, we're waiting for the airport to contact us. That just seems to me to be very, very reactive, not proactive. So I don't understand why we're sitting back and waiting to take up these issues. The other thing that was brought up in the meeting was creating a buffer between the county and the city of Ormond Beach. Again, no discussion or progress being made or, or anything about, about that. It was also brought up in the previous meetings about notification to the public. The newspaper that's, that's being provided to the public is, is obscure, not well-read and subscribed-to paper. So what's being done about that? And I know there's been a lot of discussion, at least, you know, the, the attorney for, for Ormond Beach in the last meeting brought up about, well, this goes back to 2008, 2006, or what have you. But there's been meetings that have been going on since then, and I just feel that we've, we've, we've lost a lot of time on this issue. There's, there's been plenty of time, at least a year or so, for this to have been raised and, and been acted on, and, and we're, we're just getting further and further behind the eight ball. So I would appreciate it if, at the end of the meetings, you can take time to not only make motions, but also tell us about what's going on and what, what's actually happening to resolve this issue for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elena Kraft. Elena Kraft. Are you foregoing the video?
Yes, I'll go ahead and forward it to all of you guys after the council meeting.
Then you'll be next. No, go ahead, Elena.
Hello, everybody. My name is Elena Kraft. So kind of in line with what everybody's been saying, very recently, I've been called combative and negative by someone sitting on this council for simply asking hard questions of my elected officials. I want to ask you this. Is it combative for me to hold the county to a higher standard than what we've seen so far, to expect that the county hasn't placed an effective method of communication between staff and elected officials? That they have a standard for categorizing preapplications based on potential impact they will have on communities and ensuring that citizens are informed about potential threats to their environment? I don't think it's combative. I think it's the only way to move forward. This councilman that I mentioned went on to tell me that even if we had seen the announcement about the fuel farm in hometown news within that public comment period, it wouldn't have made a difference. This is in direct contradiction to what the Florida Department of Environmental Protection relayed to us in an email, and I quote, "Public comment is an important component of any DEP permitting process." DEP received two comments, just two, during this period, one regarding general use of fossil fuels and another regarding the location of the public notice. None of them directly objecting to Belvedere's proposal. Unfortunately, we were not given a chance to put forth any substantial arguments against Belvedere's downright intrusion in our neighborhoods because someone in the county, I don't know who, didn't think the information included in the 24-page pre-application document that we've all seen dated May 2022 was important enough for any of the elected officials or Volusia County residents to know. Belvedere considered the meeting with the county very significant and boasted about it at the meeting with Ormond Beach more than a year ago. As a concerned citizen of Volusia County, who has basically put everything on hold over the last month to try to stop this, I am asking you to acknowledge your shortcomings, both in terms of communication and transparency, and I'm asking you to provide us with tangible solutions for preventing this kind of dangerous situation from happening in the future. I would also like to know what progress has been made between the county and the city of Ormond Beach to establish an interlocal agreement for the proposed fuel farm land. According to city attorney Mr. Hayes, an interlocal agreement would allow Ormond Beach to exercise more restrictive regulations on any proposed fuel farm and possibly prevent it from being built.
Keith Jester.
He's not going to talk about the fuel farm. I'm a little thrown off because I won't be able to have my video, but the bottom line is I want to talk about socialism, and I want to talk about socialism here in Volusia County. One of the key elements of socialism is closing the wealth gap. And I would bet if I asked any of y'all up there if you were for socialism, especially if I asked you in public, you'd say no. However, here in Volusia County, we're using taxpayer dollars to close the wealth gap. We're taking money from hard-working people who are struggling to make it, taking their money from them by force through taxation, and we're transferring their money over to others. That's socialism. And it's very, very prevalent right here through this county government. We're harming our young working class who are trying to make it here. Anytime we're taking tax dollars and giving it to the various social programs, whether we're taking it from federal monies that we could have and should have used for other core needs in the county and giving it to socialist programs because those funds could have been used and saved those taxpayers' money, or we're taking it directly. We got to stop this. We're destroying our young, hard-working middle class here. I think the base property tax now, starting out for young people, is around five grand a year. That's over 400 and some odd dollars a month. What are we going to do when we run all of our young people out of Volusia County who us older folks desperately need to provide services? Corrections officers, police officers, nurses, teachers, and all those other things. If they can't afford to live here, what's going to happen? We've seen this throughout the nation, and we've seen what socialist programs do to many big cities. Do we want to create a Volusia County that looks like a San Francisco with all the homeless issues? Build it, and they will come. I used to think that using federal tax dollars, regardless if they were free money coming to the county, was a good idea, but I have to say I'm starting to disagree with that because if we start building more low-income housing, as they call it, using federal tax dollars, are we building it for the people who live here? Are we building it for the people in Seminole, Orange, other counties, other states that will come here to use it up? I just learned that you can transfer a Section 8 voucher from one state to another. Build it, and they will come, and they will burden our society more here. Think about our young working class. They come first. End the socialist programs here. Thank you.
David Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask the council, since we have the folks here, I know it's not an ordinary procedure. I feel compelled that we should address some of the questions that were asked today because our meeting may go late tonight, and many of you may not be here, but if the council, Mr. Chair, permits, I'd like to hear an update from our legal department and our county manager so the public can hear the work that this council and our staff has done since we last met. And I'll just preface their presentation. Remember, we only meet publicly twice a month, so that's why you see a gap. But if Mr. Chair of the council so wills, I'd like for that to happen.
Please make that a motion.
I move that we allow the county manager and attorney and any staff necessary to provide an update on the status of this fuel farm and what works occurred.
Second.
Would you include any council member?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And who was the second?
Kent.
Kent was the second. Thank you very much. That's appropriate. Okay. Can --
We need a vote, Chairman?
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion to discuss while the public's here the Belvedere situation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. And George, did you want to?
Sure. I'll kick it off, and Mike can jump in. At the last meeting, the council directed us to meet with the state and federal agencies and property owners to discuss the project, review public notice issues associated with the DEP permit, research case law and similar issues and how they have been dealt with, and research availability of alternative lands. So we've been busy on this since the last meeting. I have met with the landowners, which are, of course, the FEC railroad, and we also met with Belvedere for the first time. So I just would report that probably the biggest thing that came out of discussions with both the landowner and Belvedere was that they were open to an alternative location if one could be found. So we're in that process now of looking and providing data to both the railroad and to Belvedere about what potential sites are out there. We're also getting criteria from Belvedere on what they are looking for specifically because there's several parts to what they deem important, and we are trying to get what those priorities are to help in any kind of land search. We have met with the city of Ormond Beach, the manager and their attorney, and we've been in almost daily conversation with them. And I've reported after each time I've met with the railroad and the time I met with Belvedere, back to the city manager. So we're in constant, like I say, communication. The other parts of the -- I think Mike can hit on the legal aspects of what your questions were. We did get a report back, I think, from an outside consultant, which I think is going to either be distributed or has been.
Yeah, so I believe the city and the county each mentioned this in the update we sent out September 1st. We're retaining an expert to look at the air construction permit and issues associated with that. We just got a response back from that firm. They do not see any issues with the minor air construction permit as it was submitted and believe that the notice provisions were satisfied in the state rules as they were laid out. We did provide to you in that September 1st email just some background and response to your question about how have these issues been addressed in other jurisdictions with disputes that have arisen. So we've given you that information. Happy to answer any questions you have at that time when you're ready.